I think.
Yeah, we are now.
We are, we always are.
We're live.
Welcome all my CW people, our CW.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. You're, you know, you've.
Table Talk is live once again.
You've got vacation. I'm glad we gave you vacation pay and you missed two out of the last six weeks. I hope the paycheck was good.
Yeah, you're just keeping count.
But I do want to ask you a question because you went to Maine. Tell me, I, I've always went, you know, cause I, cold weather helps you. How was Maine? Cause I've never been.
Uh, Maine was nice. It was, um, it was like eighty degrees. Now, we were at the beach. The water's freezing cold. So, I mean, like the kids didn't mind it as much, but like as an adult, I can get in for probably three or four minutes at a time and then I have to get out. Like it's just, it's, it's cold right now. So, I don't know how warm that water actually gets by the end of the summer, but right now it's pretty frigid.
What about, um, did you, I mean, did you do lobster place with Mark?
Yeah, we had a lot of lobster. I mean, that's like all you eat up there. There was like a, they have like a light, live lobster, like a little shack right outside, one of the towns where like you just pull up and there's like four people working in there and there's just live lobsters and they sell them to you whole and, I mean, everything there is lobster.
Hey, Brent, where's ours, right?
Oysters.
I should have told Jeff.
He didn't bring any back.
You know, I'm trying to be nice to Jessica. I bring her up. I talk to her about her. I mean, she's awesome. Jessica, we want you on the show. We want some of your bread. This is Edwin, when you, we introduce you, this lovely wife. So I saw the kids and Mark and.
Yeah, you don't fly with lobster though, guys.
But the thing about Mark was, I thought was funny. He had all SoCal advertising. I saw Jessica's story. Like he had SoCal shirt on.
Yeah.
SoCal hat on. And I'm like, God, I get him a cheapskate hat. I gotta, I gotta, we gotta get his address and send him some, uh, you know, comped, uh.
Ronnie hats.
Ronnie hats, yeah. But maybe I'm rich. Wouldn't be the perfect.
Rich friend.
I'll get that.
Yeah, the rich friend hat.
Right.
Yeah.
I would, I'm gonna do that today. Do you think that would sell, Rich? What do you think?
Without a doubt.
Oh, a rich friend hat would sell for sure.
Yeah, we'll try. Well, we haven't really sold, you know, I, I talked to my accountant yesterday. She's gonna meet me about state tax ironically and all that. And like, I said, well, listen, we've had like eight hundred dollars in sales and I've spent three thousand to four thousand a half. So bring it. I want my loss. I'm just doing it for fun. So you went there.
For tax purposes.
Came back.
Yep, it's Fourth of July.
I've talked about exciting story about my stupid Panthers, right? And Tepper, you know, you're supposed to come on, but you need to hear this. And, uh, you know, so I've been a member. Mark Richardson was my friend on the team. So all the, his friends sit right in front of three forty-five. And he looked down on us. If you don't know Mark Richardson, you know him with Jerry Richardson. So I had my seats right there. I bought them in nineteen ninety-two, whenever, whenever they started. I have tickets, club level. Well, I made a payment, you know, last year I sold tickets. I'm really not going. I made a payment nine hundred and eighty dollars something, right? I'm thinking I'm good, right? I, I didn't think anything of it. I'll just make my next payment. I get this letter threatening me. Like who writes these letters? Like who is the marketing department from the marketing lady?
See attorneys, man.
Like, we're gonna cut your tickets off. You're gonna cut your head off. And unless you have extraordinary situation, which poor Luke had to hear about it for about ten minutes. I'm ready to call like Tepper himself, like.
So what, what was the reason for that? You didn't pay?
Well, I paid, I was eighty dollars short. I mean, come on. I paid for, I've given him, if you.
They sent him a cheapskate hat.
Cost it out thirty years, five thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty grand. Like call people up. Why don't you call them and say, hey, what happened? America's lost it.
Cheapskate.
With emails and, you know, you know, be, so the guy called me. I told him my situation. I said, listen, I don't know.
Was that considered extraordinary?
I think, I don't know. He took my credit card right away. He never talked. I guess we really have a month. I, I wanna show you the letter. We're gonna put it up. Cause it's the worst letter written by the Pan. I was so mad. I wasn't mad because I'm like, it, this is, somebody's just stupid.
Yeah.
The Panthers wanna build business. You don't send this letter out. Like, I, I get it.
They got a lot of empty seats. I don't think they need to make anybody mad.
Yeah, it's probably not the best time to be doing that.
The Hornets doubled their price of tickets. I don't know. Are you guys getting them or not?
Well, we're gonna split some.
I had a dream that, that Denny got him somehow, but like, I think I talked to him or something in a dream, like he was gonna get him.
Yeah.
But like I had my seat take double the price, you know, so.
Yeah, I don't know, man.
I mean, about the live court side.
It's crazy. They gotta, they gotta pay for all these renovations and stuff.
I'm just hoping Ronnie Hats makes it. So if you haven't been on RonnieHats.com, all my friends out there and, and Michael too. I mean, anybody can buy a Ronnie. Brent even had made Brent, he bought a Ronnie hat. So Edwin, I mean, you can, you know, buy a Ronnie hat. Like I don't care. Like I'm not asking really. I'm telling you, like, if you wanna be my friend.
Well, this, this might be a good time to introduce our guest there, Ron.
I have a Ritt Rock hat though. Okay, yeah, well, we're gonna make you buy some. We're, we're, we're gonna get into that tip. I'll give you a old fashioned for, and you buy a hat. It's about saying, he likes, by the way, he likes your drink.
All your old fashioned?
Edwin Quarles. Tell us a little bit about yourself, what, what you're here.
Welcome to the show.
I'm Edwin Quarles. I'm one of your town commissioners in the town of Huntersville. I'm also the twelfth congressional district commissioner for Department of Veteran Affairs. Served in the Air Force, ten years, four months, four days, had to get out after my third reenlistment. Got out because of some disabilities. I have some internal disabilities. I served in Desert Storm. And during this set, I may start coughing, but it's not COVID. I was around the burn pits. And my job when I was in Air Force, I had a toxic clearance and I wrote war plans. And because of my internal disabilities, I was no longer considered worldwide qualified. Therefore I had to get out. So I got out of the Air Force. I came to Huntersville, I'm sorry, Charlotte.
Yep.
And started my life there. Did some logistics management, working for corporate. And didn't want to continue in the life of a glass ceiling. Therefore I stepped out on my own and started my own business. And my wife and I once owned a marketing firm. And of all people, the Charlotte Bobcats was one of my clients.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, at the first game they ever had at the arena.
Oh, yeah.
That was a basketball goal that we actually did the marketing design in, in the foyer area.
Nice.
And went from the Bobcats to the Great Wolf Lodge and grew my business to Richmond, Virginia. And my disability started getting worse with the chronic migraine headaches, this coughing that I do quite often. And I also have fibromyalgia and chronic fatigue syndrome. So I do a lot of work, but no one know I have these internal, um, issues. And I continue to push. So I had to get out and sold my business thirteen years ago.
Nice.
So I became a community servant. I was a volunteer at Hopewell High School for twenty-one years. Didn't have children there. I just wanted to get in there and to mentor young men.
Yep.
And just love what I do.
Nice.
And do what I love.
And in the Air Force, back then, did you, I know you played baseball, you said, right?
Oh, man, I was good. I came out of high school playing baseball. Played pitcher in first base in high school. Matter of fact, Ron, I never played junior varsity baseball. I started varsity pitcher in the ninth grade. And I had the big head, excuse me. But when I got to the Air Force, it was softball and I wanted to play first base. I never forget when I was stationed in Korea, they were saying, well, Q, nickname is Q, you won't start first base. Or this guy named Turtle. Well, I was starting first baseman when the season started.
Well, Turtle doesn't make him shit. I mean, I don't know if you wanna have one of your baseball. Hey Turtle, I'm pretty slow, probably like me, you know, like, oh yeah, Turtle's on our team. So you, when you went to the Air Force, did you play ba, did you ever play baseball with those guys or not?
I played softball. But one thing I did do.
Oh, you did.
And Ron, I will bring you some pictures. In nineteen eighty-eight, I have pictures of me playing basketball against a nineteen eighty-eight Olympic team.
Oh, nice.
I was stationed at Osan Air Base Korea and we had the eighty-eight Olympics and, in Korea. And I was also on the base basketball team. And we scrimmaged the eighty-eight Olympic.
Who was on the eighty-eight Olympic team?
Danny Manning, those guys.
Okay. That was pre, was that pre NBA players?
Well, Manning might have been. Oh, was he Kansas?
He was at Kansas.
Yes. And John Thompson was the coach at that time.
Wow, John Thompson, I get, I mean.
There's probably some Tar Heels on there too.
But John Thompson, you know, David Wingate was my roommate and, uh, and David said to John, uh, when you played for him, you got recruited by him. Then you went in the dorm. And there was this one kid that was always late, right? He was always late. Really, really tops athlete. And John said, if you're late one more time, you're getting caught, right? And David's first thing with John Thompson was, that guy was late again for practice. He caught him and he was a really good player. And he scared the shit out of David, but that, that, I don't know how to pivot that, but John Thompson was a coach. I'd say nineteen eighty-eight, I don't even know, they win the national championship back, or the Olympic gold?
I don't, I think they did.
What do you think? Nineteen eighty-eight USA?
Let's find out.
Let's find out.
We have our, uh, what would you call that guy on a, on a podcast?
Bronze medal producer.
Our producer, yeah. And Chrissy's over there, our marketing director going, what the heck is the?
Yeah, they got the bronze medal. They had Dan Marley.
Yeah.
J R Reed, North Carolina. I knew there was.
J R Reed, wow.
Mitch Richmond, David Robinson was on that team.
No.
Yeah.
Mitch Richmond was good.
Would Dave Robinson go to school again?
Navy.
Oh, yeah.
Who's in the Navy?
Navy, yes.
Stacy Augman.
They crushed us too.
Yeah, I could see why. Did you have to guard, did you have to guard David Robinson?
No, well, I was out there on the floor.
They had, they had Nidget on the team. They had Turtle on the team. Slowpoke on the team. And they had.
And cute.
Practice was so cool. You had like one hour of them strictly offense.
Yeah.
And we couldn't stop them. And then vice versa. It was horrible.
You know, I was a good, yeah, back in the day, we played, uh, basketball against, my coolest story is Adam Sandler and them. When they did that one movie, I think it was Grown Ups. And I was fortunate enough to play at the Dallas Arena with them, but it was fun. But they were, I think some of those guys were called Turtle and, you know, Adam was pretty good, but they had a lot of good and bad players. You're talking about really good players, really tall. And they probably just screwed around with you really.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. So you, uh, now the county commissioner part, you, you started when? How long ago?
I got elected November twenty twenty-three. Yes. I, um, played around with somewhat politics for many years, Ron, but I would never do anything that was partisan politics. I wanted to do everything nonpartisan. I believe if you do nonpartisan, you really have a heart to serve all the people.
Mm-hmm. And that's how we met, right? You know, you came up and told me about the, Burke Dell, so you know guys, you know, he told me about the Burke Dell, what do you call it?
Rezoning.
Rezoning, redevelopment. And they were against it. A lot of people were against it. And, and I, I took, actually, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna meet with every county commissioner because I wanna know what the real deal was. And you explained it to me. So the Burke Dell thing is real less, you were talking last night about economic development. That's gonna be good for Burke Dell. But then you're also talking about slowing some type of development down because you don't want too many people.
Absolutely.
What, what's that? What's that about? Like, how did you say that last night? I was trying.
Economic development, if you do smart growth, you wanna do things such as Burke Dell, for example, you have mixed use development. You have businesses at the bottom of these facilities and residences on the top. If I was a business owner, I would not wanna bring my business where I don't have bodies that come to my, my establishment. So this current board, we have not approved one apartment complex or one subdivision. Everything we've proved, approved and voted on was mixed use development because businesses pay more in taxes. So you gotta be smart about that. So we slowed down the growth by only approving mixed use development. And the developers know not to bring us any, um, proposals or any, on projects that was not mixed use. And that's brought a huge economic impact to our town.
Yeah, I think too, you were talking about apartment complexes too. You, you, are you, do you support those or not? Like, how's that? Like even back here, you did a great apartment back here behind Burton's and all that. Now that's Huntersville, right? So.
Well, the previous board did that. Do I, uh, support that? Right now I don't. We need to catch up with our infrastructure. And if you bring in more businesses, you'll have more tax dollars that the town can spend in infrastructure. Give us some time and then apartments later. But right now, if you just go strictly apartments, you're gonna lose.
You know, I asked, it's Jessica, right? The pro temp, mayor temp, pro temp?
Jennifer.
Jennifer. I asked Jennifer last night and maybe you guys, Michael, we think about this. You're a marketing guy, but do you think when they build the apartments at Jotun up there, whatever it is, Kataba, and then they build their apartments here, where do the people move from? Are they moving in the five mile radius? Or are they really moving from Mooresville? They moving from downtown or what? And she didn't really have a study on that, but what do you think? Like, just is thinking about it. Like, what do you think? Like, there's a new apartment complex. So do you move from the old one over here, over there?
I would say probably coming from either Mooresville or you're coming from Huntersville.
Or do you think they come from another state? Like, I don't know.
I, I think mainly other states right now.
Really?
For sure. Yeah.
To the apartments?
Yes.
I have to agree with that. Uh, yeah, what do you think? The state of North Carolina right now is the second fastest growing in the country.
Yeah.
The people in Raleigh wanna be number one. So they are lower, they're giving businesses incentive to move here. But in addition to giving business incentives, they're gonna lower our personal prop or our income taxes to lure more people in here. So again, I agree. More people are coming here because of the entitlements you're gonna get.
Yeah.
To move. Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, you know, I, if it was me and Michael, I mean, you're, when you were single and Brent, when you were single, I'm looking for the best pole. I wanna know what Sunday activities you have. I wanna know if you're gonna have a splash and go party. We gonna buy Turtle too, or we're gonna just, you know, that's what I'm looking at. You know, my dad taught me something too. I always look at, he, he, he taught me when I moved into an apartment. Look at the cars. I mean, that's how my dad thought, like, if there's any busted windows, like dad, I'm not gonna get that, you know, like, like I just remember my dad telling me that. I think it's interesting when the apartments went there and there. And I'm trying to figure out, are they all ninety percent full to go to eighty percent? But you know, Burke Dell, with the growth, what do you think about the hotel and the office and, and the parking decks? What did you think about that?
It was two, it was a no brainer. It, the hotel would be more of a class A type hotel. It's gonna bring in a different clientele. Let's say you are CEO. Most CEOs want to stay in a hotel where they can walk to a restaurant or to a bar.
Yeah.
That would bring in a different sales tax person into your community. And that right there would bring more value. So again, I was all in favor of it. I'm a retired entrepreneur, so I think business and economics. And it was a project that would bring in, uh, millions of dollars into our town of Huntersville. And then also Burke Dell is your highest tax generator. Why not beef that up?
And the office too, that's gonna be good. And we'll have.
Office space, yeah.
You can tell, if you went to South Park right now, they're totally full of lunch. And then we have, we struggle at lunch a little bit just because of that. We don't have the parking. Cause most people that, you know, if you're on it, you know, Chris Scott, there's Renee. Miss America's walking in. Hey, Miss America.
Hello.
Hello, my friend. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Wonderful.
So. I think that, I, I mean, I think the office is important and then you have more apartments.
The office would also, um, bring more business.
Yeah, yeah. So what's the hotel situation? Do they know? Like, has that been finalized?
It's been finalized. We voted on it.
But no idea what hotel it's gonna be? Do you know?
It's gonna be something of the Marriott chain.
Okay.
If not that, more like the Grand Bohemian. So again, you have your upscale Marriott, I'm sorry, hotels coming into the area.
If you go to Avalon and I don't know, did they take you all down there? Did you visit Avalon? Cause they owned that.
I did not go to Avalon. The previous board went to Avalon. And I was shocked that they did not move forward with that by seeing what Avalon really is.
They have a hotel and I stayed at one where the room was at the pole and they showed me the whole center and it was nice, but you know.
Where's this at?
It's in Atlanta. It's outside of Atlanta, past Roswell. I forget the area past. It, it's Alpharetta maybe, but it's very nice. It's got a movie theater. It's got, you know, part of the problem with Burke Dell, we don't own the, uh, which, which that building, we don't own Bun Cakes building and we don't own the, and I say we, they don't own the movie theater. So it's a little tricky. You know, and I think where people get scared, where the economic development helps is, you know, when I talk to people, well, I mean, you know, it's gonna get like bad. What if it gets like Eastland or Northlake? I'm like, these guys have money. They have security. They have, you know, that's what has to help the police department with all that money coming in. Hopefully that will help. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And we don't have, you know, tell us about how it works with, cause I was gonna ask you this question the other night. How's it work with bus lines really? Like, you know, like South Park has a bus line where we get employees from, but where are the bus lines here in, in Huntersville? Do you even know? Would that, is that a question you even know or not?
Bus lines are mainly in the west side of Huntersville, near Ham Bright Road, um, back up in there.
How does that go? They just.
There's one by the ABC store in Huntersville.
Yes, we have a park and ride where.
By the church by elevation up there.
Yes, that's, that right there is where you have people that wanna pay for parking downtown. But to get around town, we don't have anything that's gonna come to the Burke Dell area. I think that could be a good thing as well. But they have the, um, now the metro, the Charlotte metro, that's the little car that's like Uber.
Yeah.
That would get people around for like two do, two bucks.
Oh, what is that?
I don't even know. Are you really? I've seen the app. Yes, it's really cool. Uh, where you can have someone that could live in, uh, Cedarville. And they wanna come to Burke there. Instead of calling it Uber or a Lyft, they call the CATS metro, um, system. And this is two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents.
Shoot, when people stay at my house, they need to do that. You know what I mean? Especially if I, I give them all the liquor. I give them all the food.
Yeah.
And they, like you, come over for an old fashioned. You know, it's, you know, you don't realize.
Call the CATS and take me home.
Call the CATS. Exactly. You, and by the way, you have not been by with the golf cart lately at all, nothing. I, I know you're busy, but.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll do that this, I might do that this weekend.
Yeah, forgive me. It's two dollars and twenty cents versus two dollars and fifty cents.
But anybody could take it anywhere?
Yes.
Maybe what we do is a, a table talk on that thing. Like, you know what I mean? Like, maybe the date should be on that too with.
Ron on the streets.
Add it, yeah.
What I'm saying is we're doing the Greyhound bus. We're gonna take a Greyhound bus across the country. Michael, you weren't here for this. You're in it.
Oh, yes.
So when I was a kid, my, my mother, you know, said, if you wanna see your girlfriend, by the way, uh, Lori Gilbert, by the way, is a twin and she was cute. And, uh, so my mom's gonna take a bus from Indian University in Bloomington, Indiana, all the way to Pittsburgh. If you wanna go fly me, I, I mean, I only did one bus ride. I'll never do it again. I'll never go back and see that girl again. I mean, it was like, but it went to every different city. I never took it. Did you ever take a Greyhound bus?
Dude, I, I did it from, uh, Charlotte to Oklahoma City.
And how long did it take you?
Maybe twenty-four hours.
Did you, how many cities you stop in?
I couldn't even count it. I just needed a, I needed a calculator.
They ruined it.
How long do you stop for? When you stop this place?
I don't remember like nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two.
So you're there for like thirty minutes, an hour?
Something longer than that because of the transfers.
But what we figured out, when you get Kush, we already had Keller said to come, Alex said to come. You're gonna go obviously because of table talk.
I think, I think Max said too.
Yeah, Max, we're gonna go to Dallas. And every city we're gonna go to, again, we're gonna hit Tinder.
I'm out of town that week.
But I think it'd be a fun show, but the town people really live. Like, I think it's a good idea.
It'd be fun for like the first thirty minutes.
Yeah.
And then.
I'm still at a minimum hoping for a nice RV, not the Greyhound.
Yeah, I think the RV would be fun, but the CATS thing is interesting. That's whoever started that. You know, I think with Latoya last night, we, you know, county commissioner worrying about some of the communities that, that aren't as fortunate as other people. And I think that's one of the things you do that I liked it, that, you know, I grew up in a democratic family back in the day.
Yeah.
And it was about taking care of the people, like the sidewalks. Latoya wants sidewalk. I forget, what is that community called?
Pottstown.
She wants sidewalks in Pottstown, right? And this is, you know, one of the ones when I talked to Latoya and her, like, and I, I would say, well, why don't we take the money that you're getting from this development and put it to, because those people don't have sidewalks. You know, they, they, you know, they're walking on the grass.
That's part of smart growth, Ron. Uh, you have to say, how can we save money that don't pass on to our constituents regardless of your party affiliation? You don't wanna spend extra dollars. And if the developers can bring skin to the game, you can now spend money in your, your neighborhoods.
Now, what about taxes? Who passes taxes? The commissioners or is the?
The commissioners do. Um, plus based on your debt, we have not, we did not raise taxes in twenty twenty-five and we will not raise taxes in twenty twenty-six because of the economic impact.
You're still alive. Don't worry.
Okay, I just seen the comments. I'm sorry. Um, yeah. And then if you don't know this, Michael and Brent, is that I didn't realize that the commissioners in this state only get two years. So every two years they get voted in and out. Or a lot of places have four. That's the problem with Woody too. So the problem with me is every two years I gotta give somebody a little cash to help mine for their campaign because you need, you know, to do that, you have to. And, and just so you know, he had his, while Edwin is in my heart, he had his, his campaign party here last night.
Yeah, I saw, I saw video.
Which again, you know, he didn't have to have it here, but it helped the little guy, you know, and the small business guy versus some of the bigger people. And that, I, I really meant a lot to me. So what do you think else is going on or can we, what else is going on in Huntersville right now? What, what, what can we look for?
Oh, man. You have at the end of this year, um, Joe Logano and his business partner, Ben Geisler, will be breaking ground on Town One. I call Town One a Burke Dell on steroids. It's another mixed use development. The cool thing about that project is, but excuse me, once they start that project and they move their first set of tenants in, the Burke Dell rezoning would not have started. So some of the traffic, when people concerned about traffic in Burke Dell and places to park, they're gonna go to Town One. But once Town One is complete, Burke Dell will be, um, worked on and that's complete. So it allow you to spread your business throughout.
Good.
Another thing we're doing is we revitalizing downtown. You need to bring in something downtown Huntersville. So that's another cool thing we're doing.
The Cachen's got knocked down, right?
Yes, yeah. You bought that. You bought that from my friend.
And right now, was it just a, a lot or something?
It's a lot right now. Yes. But there's another project that we will be voting on on next Tuesday. It's called Holbrook Two, which is right beside Seven Sixty Brewery.
Yeah.
We might allow them the opportunity to use that parking lot. Uh, so Seven Sixty can have, um, more customers.
Downtown Huntersville has come a long way. I mean, I, I lived there from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one and it was, you know.
What's up?
The Cachen's was there. It wasn't a lot there, but every time I go back now, it's like Seven Sixty, they've got the new, I guess, apartments there and the stores on the bottom of their building and the new town homes across. It's actually come a long way.
Have you ever done your kid's birthday party at that place down?
Discovery Place?
Yeah, I went to a couple of parties there. That's a big deal too. I didn't realize how they're always busy.
I'm working on a big deal with Discovery Place Kids. That's one of my big, my next big initiatives. They want to, well, we're moving into a new town hall at the end of this year. But Discovery Place Kids right now are on this first and second floor. And in the fifteen years they've been there, they haven't did any renovations. So what they want to do is spend four million bucks and to change in Discovery Place Kids where they can bring in AI, STEM and environmental stewardship.
Yeah.
That's gonna change the customers that go downtown. Now you have kids up to thirteen to fifteen years old.
Yeah.
More families go downtown to see what they have to offer. And again, I'm gonna keep saying it's the economic impact. So if you have a business downtown, you wanna support giving them.
Yeah.
Extra space. So they want the third floor of our, um, the building they're in because our staff is moving from the third floor to the new town hall.
Oh, wow.
And that's the third floor in the Discovery Building?
Yes, cause right now part of the, um, town staff is in that building.
I didn't realize that. Okay.
So why not just give it to them? They don't want any money. They just want that space so they can bring in.
Have you, have you done a party for?
Uh, I haven't had a party with my kids, but I've been there numerous times with my kids. They've either been to birthday parties. They've been to field trips there.
Do they still have the, the place over there by Crafty Burger up here? The, the other kids play?
Oh, yeah, Urban Air.
Yeah, does that do good?
Yeah, that place kills it.
Hey, uh, make sure Emily brings some stuff for us.
My kids love Urban Air. Like, it's, and it's always crowded every time I go and there's.
Have you ever seen that?
Never seen that.
It's like a trampoline park, like indoor trampoline park where you run, jump, you know, ball pit, all that stuff.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah, um, they have like, uh, bumper cars. Um, uh, it's like a ropes course, all that stuff. And it's indoors. It's a lot of fun.
What, what about up? So the, the state builds the roads here. You talk about every, who, who does Sam, they're gonna do Sam fur in one fifty.
Your main roads are the state and your side roads is your town.
So when seventy-three gonna be done, do you think?
We heard twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So, but with the, um, situation in the western, uh, part of the state, that, that could very well change some funding because.
The mayor was saying, yeah.
So one of the, um, head persons for the state, they moved him to the western part just to help get them sped up on some things.
What about United States? I mean, you know, the money from FEMA, I guess it would be. Did they help out a lot too or not? No. Our state.
For the, that, they would help out for Western.
Yeah, Western Carolina, they would, yeah.
And off of the road, obviously.
I'm pretty sure you have some friends in DC that can help us get seven three worked on.
Well, I don't know. I, you know, seven things would be interesting. I, I can't figure it all out.
Who's gonna help you getting taxed on your sports bets?
Well, that's, that's the crazy.
Can you do anything about that for Ron?
Yeah, not for everybody. Me, Michael and Chris. I mean, they're writing it in the big beautiful bill. They did it. If you bet.
That part's not very beautiful.
If you bet a hundred grand for the whole year.
Yeah.
Or fifty grand, they're gonna tax you ten percent of that money. So if you bet fifty, it's, it's ten percent.
Are you sure that's in the, the bill?
No doubts. Listen, the, the people, actually, there was a lady just put to, from another bill, you have to read up on it, but yes, it's definitely in there. But it's kinda interesting that, that they're going after the, the people in Vegas, he wanted to get to votes Trump, right?
Yeah.
He wanted to get the votes, but then it, for the no tax on tips?
Yeah.
Which is, just so you know, if you are an employee that gets taxed, I've been reading up on that. But it's about me. I'm pretty, you know, like I sit at home and I read, you know, I mean, well, Michael's out there golfing and, you know, Maine and Florida. You never know who the guy is, you know, kids, dogs, I mean, everything. But I'm reading.
He's got no time to read.
I don't have time to read a bill from Washington DC.
Yeah, so, but they're gonna get twenty-five thousand.
I got a dog I just found out about.
Five, a twenty-five thousand dollar write-off. So if, 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 uh, our server Tay made twenty-five thousand, he won't have to pay his first twenty-five thousand in tips.
Yeah.
And so in overtime, same thing, they get a twelve thousand five hundred deduction, which is good. But the big beautiful bill, if you're over sixty-five, you get a sixty-five hundred dollar deduction. So there's some good things in there. There's some things like this thing they slid in about to, and a lot of my friends gamble and we have fun with it. You know, it's not like, but they're gonna tax it. So we'll see what happens there. What about, um, so we got the roads going on. What else is going on? The highway is they, they're gonna do exit twenty-seven. Is Huntersville involved in that or is that your exit?
That's all state.
So they don't, that, that's not our money?
Correct. Yeah, we don't have anything to do with the state road, highways, things of that nature.
So when they say they want a road on twenty-seven, the commissioners have no say on where the land's going? So when they say they want a road on twenty seven, the commissioners have no say on where the land's going?
You have more power than I do on something like that. We're equals basically. Um, we have no say so in that. Yeah, like the toes, if someone talk about, oh, I'm gonna run for a local office and do something with toes.
No, it's a, that's a.
That's a lie. Yeah.
Yeah. So when exit twenty seven comes out, because my ex, a long time ago, her dad was kinda a commissioner. And he always knew where to put the gas stations and all that, but you would know, not him, he wouldn't, but you know, where the gas station people would meet with them. So exit twenty seven, how does somebody like a guy like Michael wants to open up a gas station off that exit? Is there a plan? Yeah, cause he'd be a Mexican cartel, no way. Kush's cartel. No, I, I, yeah, Kush's grocery store. I would go to it. But my, our friend is awesome, but he's got a lot of good ideas.
But he is, they do do gas stations.
He is Indian. We love the guy.
Yeah, but they do, he literally does get, they do.
His family?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, how does, how does somebody know that area? Like, do you guys know what's good, where the road's gonna end and what you're gonna put there or like?
Yes, just like a good example, um, the red line, there are developers that want to buy property along the red line. Hoping to get passed because if you get the red line in there, it's gonna be a boom for their business. Same thing with exit twenty seven. If someone, excuse me, is looking at land in an area, you wanna find some.
Well, twenty seven's Westmoreland, right? Really a connector?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or not?
No, it's before that.
No, it come off Westmoreland. And you would turn right there on right, you would take you up on Westmoreland.
Ron, a good example, you know where Ham Bright Road is?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the Ben Geisler and the Town One project is gonna be right off of that Ham Bright Road exit. Connecters you were talking about. Well, they purchased the land, a lot of developers started buying land in that area. Before that exit was put in place. So someone's got their eyes on it already to buy land, similar to what they did at the Ham Bright Road exit.
Yeah, so Huntersville stops.
Twenty three eleven is, it's off Ham, Ham Bright.
It is. We, where is, what is, cause I, I, we had Woody on, uh, the mayor from Cornelia. Where is Hunter? That's where I'm confused. Where's Cornelia's stop and Huntersville begin?
I was working on a project on that before you came here. When you come down Catawba, as soon as you turn right by the, is that the church? It used to be eight or years ago. Is that, what's your elevation church?
Yeah, elevation.
Yes.
Now you're into Cornelius.
Yeah, right there. Oh, so Westmoreland is still Cornelius?
Yes.
And Robbins Park is still Cornelius?
Cornelius, yes.
Yes. And then Huntersville is where cabin, those, what about those townhouses there on the right?
Those are Cornelius as well.
And what's the tax difference, property tax between Cornelius and Huntersville? Is there that much of a difference?
It's not that much of a difference. Huntersville is twenty two point seven five, um, per one hundred dollars. Cornelius, I wanna say is about twenty. They're lower than we are. They can afford that because of the structures. They have bigger homes. They have more money coming in from the personal property tax. That's why Huntersville have to focus on businesses versus housing and apartments. We have to be able to keep the tax base low. Here's a cool one for you. Of the top twenty five municipalities in the state of North Carolina, as far as population, Huntersville has the lowest personal property tax of any of them in the state.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
It's really good.
That's really good.
And if you now know the formula to keep your taxes low, we can maintain being the lowest personal property tax in the state.
More people help lower taxes, would you say? If you have more people?
More people lower taxes, but if you play the game that you don't bring in the right businesses, you're gonna bring in more houses. And then someone's gotta pay that bill because when you bring in more houses, more garbage pickup, more policing and, and public safety.
Everything else.
Yeah, so if you want that good quality of life, you don't want too many business, I'm sorry, too many houses in the area, too many apartments. You gotta make sure that you can balance your tax base, but make sure that tax base is diversified.
How many policemen do we have in our area?
Wow, we have a hundred and twenty seven.
I'm asking a lot of questions.
That's kinda cool stuff, man.
No, it's good enough, Ron.
This is good stuff. We have a hundred twenty seven and we just passed the budget last year to hire additional police officers. Now, for public safety, are you aware that the town of Huntersville got its charter in eighteen seventy three and they never had a full-time fire department?
Really?
Yes, we got the first full-time fire department last year.
Wow.
Yeah.
What about, um, Will writes on here in Montana, Will, if you're listening. Now, how many fire departments you think you have? Will's building a house in Montana. Are you, it's in the woods. You wonder how many policemen and fire departments have there like?
Probably not as many as they had in LA when you lived there.
Cause I, Will's a great guy. He's a good friend. He calls me all the time. I love the guy, but. So last night I was like, I think I'm gonna drive to Montana. I thought Montana was closer to like.
You, you said that?
No, no, no. What are we drinking? Emily's gotta bring it in. Emily's gotta tell us where it is. Tell Emily to come on in. Tell us, explain this. We love Emily. So we love you too. So I, how many miles do you think over or under, or just how many miles you think it is to Montana where I was?
From, from here?
Yeah.
Uh, two thousand.
Okay, how many miles you think?
No, wait, hold on.
It was thirty two fifty.
I was gonna say twenty six.
Okay, yeah, I was just, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, I, I just thought it was before Colorado. I was, I'm gonna take a little road trip with my car, right? Cause I wanna get away, but I don't know where. But I know Montana would be good now out there, cause they wouldn't know I'm there. Like hide now, like, where's Ron? I don't know. I'm in Montana, but I, after seeing that trip, I don't know about that. I might, wonder if cats would take me.
Yeah.
For two dollars. We have Cats Metro.
All right, I'm gonna let you know that I'm, I'm a real person and always this political stuff. I was at Butte, Montana before.
Okay.
My brother and I were driving from Richmond, Virginia to Alaska. Well, we're just, uh, Seattle, Washington. To put my, my truck on the ferry and I was gonna fly to my assignment in Alaska. I have my shotgun in the back of my pickup trucks. I'm a real brother now, right? So I get to this gas station in Butte, Montana. This is the honest truth. And the music cut off when I went inside.
No way.
I peed on my pants, man. I'm like, wow, I was nervous because.
Were you just pulling over for?
What year was this?
This was, oh man, I was in Alaska, um, in eighty nine.
Wow.
Yeah.
So you were, you were leaving Virginia, driving to Seattle. And you stopped in Montana for like a restroom break or something?
Get some gas.
Yeah, you walk in.
Shut the music, what are you thinking?
Hey man, I look a little different going up in there.
Yeah, Montana, yeah, I could, yeah. Have you seen movies?
Well, I mean, you know.
It's just like, there's probably, the prob, first of all, probably not used to tour, like anybody from outside, it's probably a small town, like people, everyone knows everyone.
Have you watched Animal Kingdom?
That was a long drive, I'm sure too.
Yeah, but I also drove from Alaska back to Virginia when I, my son.
No way, how long?
Yeah, oh man, that's about a four day drive. My brother and I, we were crazy because we'd pull over.
Yeah.
Come on in, Emily.
Couple hours instead of getting in a hotel room and get back on the road.
Right, yeah.
Uh, but it was really crazy. But when I left Alaska.
Yeah.
Uh, they gave us a briefing.
Talking about driving from Richmond to Alaska.
If you see, now it was during the winter months, if you see a gas station that's open.
Stop.
Stop.
Yeah.
Even if, if you only five dollars worth of gas, stop because you may not see another gas station open for miles and miles and miles. And that would happen because in some parts of Canada, it's so much snow.
Yeah.
They're closed for the winter.
Wow.
Yeah.
You know, I went to Greenbrier once. Have you ever not, like, have you ever almost ran out of gas?
Uh, no.
Well, I have. You know, it was Greenbrier. I was really thinking like, I think I'm gonna run out, but there's no gas station. I was with Robin back in the day and I couldn't figure out. I, I was ticking. Like, I was like, we're gonna run out of gas, but we didn't. And then to, to lude to that, my golf cart the other day, I ran out of lithium, whatever that battery is. Luckily it was right. I was on Hondas, John Hunter's good friend of mine. Luckily, I, I ran out, uh, a tenth of a mile. So I called my friends, they pushed me to John Hunter's house and then I got my charger and we put it in. So the fear of running out of gas is, is real. So I, I would, I don't ever run out of gas, especially back in nineteen eighty eight going to Alaska. But that would be a good trip. Maybe we take a car ride instead, me, you and, and Mike. Well, maybe we're missing it this, this trip. But Emily, what do you got for us today? What are you, what are you doing?
You got a lychee martini right here.
What is that?
Um, it's got lychee syrup, but also has Bacardi dragon berry, so it's really good. It's very sweet, but it's, it's really yummy.
Looks tasty. You go for it, Ron.
Okay.
I never see you try it.
Well, I'm allowed to, I, my, one dog said it's okay if I drink. I thought I couldn't, but she said just don't walk.
It's gonna be a little too sweet for you, but.
Oh man.
But if you chug it, it'll be fine.
Yeah.
Well, we have two gentlemen right here that like the old fashioned. Both of y'all would be get along good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
One thing I want you to bring, make sure you bring Edwin's Buffalo Calamari out for him.
Okay, I will.
I think, uh, quite a bit of that was sold last night. I was walking around with the menu showing my peers the Buffalo, Edwin Quarles Buffalo Calamari.
Well, you know, I, I, I would just, you know, people say, how do you?
That's one of my favorites probably.
How do you get on the menu? The real menu, right? And, and you do whatever. You become my friend. I got his cell phone number. He texts me and I'm telling you right now. Brent Davis was added, uh, Chrissy would probably be out on the drink, the marketing director of Ronnie Hatch, you know her?
Yeah, she should definitely be on it.
Yeah, we're trying to work with her a little bit, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm getting with her, but. But, you know, being a friend is how you get on. So you're gonna move on the main menu. I don't know what item yet, but you're gonna go on the main menu.
Ron, everything in life is built on relationships, whether it's good or bad.
Right.
It's relationships.
So why should we, how do we, how do we give, I just gave you a check to your campaign, but how does, you know, how do we give to your campaign and all that? How do you do that?
You can go to Edwin at elect Edwin Quarles dot com. There's a big donate button there. But before someone donate, I would ask someone to read about Edwin Quarles, my accomplishments, things I've done in the past, things I've done, uh, or planning on doing the next term and see if it fits with your values. But I just make sure that I'm a nonpartisan person. But go to my website, Edwin at elect Edwin Quarles dot com and support me. I, I definitely need the support there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's funny, well, five thousand votes and what, what's the lowest total? What?
We had someone that got in, um, with twenty six hundred votes.
So it's a thin margin.
It's a very thin margin. But this upcoming, um, election is gonna be interesting. It's gonna be people playing scare politics, don't fall for the crap. Or they raise taxes, but they will not tell you, what did you get for your taxes? Now share with you about being the lowest in the state as far as population. That's value behind that. So, um, the, the, they raise taxes is one thing, but I said we invested in our town.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I think that's the thing. I mean, I find out meeting with Latoya and everybody, I, I just remember her, she's so charismatic. And, and by the way, who sung that song last night, speaking of that?
Oh man, Natasha Witherspoon.
Is she an opera singer?
She's an opera singer. She, matter of fact, she travel around the world.
She sung, I mean, like real, I think the whole restaurant heard. Like she was really, really, really good.
Yes.
And what was that song, All Survive? What was that about?
I don't lie, so I don't know the name of it.
Sing it for us, Ron.
Yeah, sing it for us.
Yeah, I can sing a lot.
Go ahead.
I'm selling a way. Set open course. That's sticks, by the way.
That was the song she sang?
No.
But she was really good.
I wanna be. It was hot like that. It was real hot.
Yeah.
Real hot. I could get her on the show maybe. I should have her sing.
Well, I'd rather her do it than you.
We need an intro song.
Yeah, I mean, we, so we'll get Will. Will, I, I know you're in there if you're not, if you're listening, but send my, Ed, got the money, send him a check for five hundred. Help me out a little bit, help my a little bit for his campaign.
Again, Edwin at elect Edwin Quarles dot com.
Well, maybe, you know, you know, I'm going to see Will in California. I, I haven't solidified the date yet, but I'm coming because my other friends are in and out, but you know, I'm gonna buy a racehorse, I tell you that?
Oh, are you? We talked about it, but have you, have you found the horse?
Not yet. I mean, Will's first budget of horse was eighty grand. So I don't want no eighty grand horse. I just want like.
You want like a donkey.
What? I just want a turtle. I want a turtle. I want the guy like, I want, I don't wanna, I'm just buying it to buy, but I wanna, you know, if I could just get a ten thousand dollar horse, but it's like four thousand a month to keep up. So it's not like, so I'm gonna have to get investors just to do that. I'm gonna have to make Ronnie Hatch, probably call Ronnie Hatch, you know, or Rich, whatever.
Friend.
Yeah, Rich Friend. I need a rich friend to help me out. But I, he owns horse. So if you go, just so you know, if you wanna really, I watched him one day do it. If you really, we did tell Chris Scott about this. Go to channel six oh two on DirecTV and you can bet literally every horse track in the country every eight minutes. So Will's like.
Chris knows that already.
Will's like, you know, like, I'm like, what horse, what? He goes, bet that horse. I'm like, bet horse? I, I sat there, I think I lost the first three, every horse he had.
Where are they, where are they racing out of?
Santa Anita, Dal, Del Mar, uh, then across the country, but they own them in Santa, he owns them in Santa. Both of them, they, they, whenever they get.
How do you pick your horse? Like, how are you gonna do it?
I don't know specifically yet. I'm gonna fly out, but he wants a certain, like the eighty.
Are you going out there and testing it out and checking its muscles out and looking at it? Or you're just like, I like that one?
Well, if you don't know, I, I know you don't know about my life that much, but my, you know, I'm a man of the people.
Okay.
So I've done a lot.
Yeah.
So my friend who owned oil company back in the day, we had racehorses. And there was five of us got hired and we made, you know, fifteen an hour, but we got to wipe, you know, clean them up, get ready for the show at, at, at the Meadows. So we used to go and I'm trying to get to, because it's hard to believe, but I bet you I was in, both me and Wayne Rucks, who's my, one of my best friends in high school. We went to the races all the time and Mr. Kim never showed up. They didn't have off-track betting. And we would play like, you know, this is where the gambling problem starts. We would play like AC Doocy with like penny nickel dime with the owner of the place. But we would go to the track, just me and Wayne and sit in the box. And we would watch the race. We're, we're, like, we're kids, like sixteen, we're like dressing jeans. We're not, he was rich, we were like middle class, you know, you know, we were, we would go down, when they won, I would go down and take a picture with the horse, JJR, Latigo Handover, I can go on and on. And, uh, so that's where I like, I wish we had him here, cause I know if we had him here, we'd all, all my friendship group, we'd be at the horse track. I can see it now. You know, I could see it.
Maybe the town of Huntersville could pass that for us.
But what we'll do.
Get a horse track.
We'll go out there, you know, we say we'll do stuff, but there, we could take table talk there, you know?
All right, add that to the list. We got Table Talk five hundred, we got the cross-country road trip.
John, Ronnie Awards.
Ronnie Awards.
Tepper.
Now we've got.
Ronnie Awards never happened, but we're gonna, I think we should do the.
We did the South Park episode and then we've got, now we've got a horse track.
But I think we do the best of the, our shows. Like, what's the best part of our show? What was it? Maybe the ice skating with Alex.
Oh, and we're doing it live, we're doing one live from LA with Will, you said?
Yeah.
So we've got six episodes, we gotta figure out.
This week, hopefully, my buddy Luke and Mason were gonna go poolside at my house.
Yeah.
And do the, uh, and do the, uh, Table Talk.
Table Talk Poolside Edition.
Yeah.
First one on location.
We gotta worry about Luke May May, you know, he's starstruck over here. So I, it's like he, his eyes, oh, it's Luke, he played for Carolina, but remember.
Well, Luke might think that about me now. He's like, that's a Table Talk guy, you know? And I'd be like, Luke chill. It's just nice to meet you. I'm just a regular human, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I would, you know, I, but we do need to buy the shirts. I think we, we get one signed. He was gonna bring one of his, I'll see, but I, I think we buy the shirts.
I'll bring, I have Luke May jersey already.
Oh, you do?
No, I'm just checking.
I was gonna buy him, but there's so many styles of them. Let's buy it and get him. So hopefully that happens this weekend. So that, we're gonna do the show there. Edwin, what about, um, what about you, man? I'm sorry, how's your brother? So I walk in last night, worst thing is, let's not call it walk in, but I was doing good. My legs were good last night. I crutch in, I saw your brother, is he okay? He was sick.
Uh huh. We said this morning that people thought we were brothers because we have this rough look goatee. We just go to church together.
No, I thought it was your brother, well. No, no, I'll be honest with you, Renee, uh, who's very good, she goes, that's his brother. I go, really? I never met him, it's funny. But he, he got sick, is he okay? You know?
He's okay, he just had a rough day, and he walked out of here with an Edwin Quarles Buffalo Calamari.
And for the record, he didn't get sit from Red Rocks food.
No, no.
Yeah, just for the viewers out there.
Yes.
Yeah.
But he did, it, it kinda was nice, because I think maybe they, maybe they got him sick because he had to leave the parking spot that I wanted, so.
Yeah, he told me this morning, because I was sitting in my special spot when I came in, and he said, um, but you told me the owner sits, I mean, parks there, but the lady said, you can park there for right now, basically, and when he got sick, he was leaving, as Ron was pulling up.
Uh-huh.
You could park my, anybody, we could park alone, you know, the, the, the problem with the, when you get hurt, and so you know out there, I'm not dead, I'm not gonna die, I hurt my back a little bit, I don't know when it'll be better, but I'll be better someday. So for people out there, I did say I'd had some health issue, I don't really have health, I just have a back issue. Long story short, you know, one thing I wanna try to do is for people that really are, the grandmother, grandpa, me, like, you know, Renee said something to me today, she goes, hey, do you need your crutch? Or, and I'm like, no. I said, I need some, you know, I don't wanna say what, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna say what I said, but I, just to have it go on, I said, you know, you're acting like I'm some old guy, like, hey, why don't you give me like two?
Be careful for what you ask for.
Yeah.
Wrong question.
But, you know, ADA parking is, is funny, because now, at, at Strawberry Hill, we have five when you pull in, and, you know, Burke Dale, because I don't think that, this is my opinion, but for the people that park here, they have to park all the way in the back, in the parking deck. Well, how is somebody gonna park in the parking deck and walk out front if they get injured?
Yeah.
Like, Grandma, I'm, for real people, like, I'm okay, I can two crutch a hundred yards, you know, I'm okay, but I, I, hopefully my strife, if I, hopefully I'll get better, but if I don't, you know, a year from now, hopefully I'll be better. But if I'm not, you know, I wanna look out for the people that really need it.
I have pictures in my phone, and I'm, I've, I'm serious, I've been working on trying to get some ADA parking.
Anywhere, though, I think anywhere you're at, I think anywhere you're at, like, I think the developers should, they don't, I think they don't want it, but they don't know until it happens to them, they don't want it.
Correct.
So I think they don't want the sign, this is my opinion, like, I was laughing with the ADA card that people drive, I saw, you know, the Panthers games have to accept them and, and stuff like that, but, you know, when you have the boot on, like, when I, I used to always sprain my ankle with basketball or do something, but, you know, you get the elevator service at the Panthers game. So that's something I wanna work on someday for the people, uh, in the community, you know, to help people out, so that developers can't say, you know, we really don't care about a certain human being, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, and that's really, I know, you know, after knowing how they do it, I know how they do it.
Yeah.
You know, in Burke Dale, just so you know, uh, people said they're getting bought out, well, Levine's owned it the whole time, they were getting ready to sell out anyhow, and Jamestown owns seven percent, so Jamestown owns the development to, they manage it. So even if they get bought, they'll probably keep their seven cent, but I think it's going for two hundred fifty million.
Yes.
And, and, and Jamestown is, is looking to buy it too. I don't know if they have enough cash, so, but, you know, people will, and they could go, well, they, you know, as soon as they got this done, they, that's not the truth, though, they were gonna sell anyhow, but why wouldn't you sell? I mean, so I, by low, I, you know, me and Chris Scott trade scots, and, you know, this guy here, you know, and then when the video went to ninety-four dollars and Chris said, oh, I don't know, I, you know, I, I just don't know, but I bought it at ninety-four, I bought it at ninety-nine, I bought a hundred, now it's a hundred fifty-eight.
Yeah, Levine is an out-of-state, um, developer. So, so what? They sell to another out-of-state developer. It's out-of-state, right? It's owned by someone out-of-state, but that's what developers do.
Yeah.
Name a few projects that the developer started and they didn't sell. They don't build and develop to keep the priority, the project, they build to increase values and assets, and they sell, that's what they do.
Make the money back, yeah.
Right, right. Well, actually, you know, the people from, you know, we want, you know, I think as an owner of a restaurant, I think Michael will have SoCal advertising as well, and, you know, we want, I wanna be a Democrat and a Republican, I wanna listen to all views, which we said another word for.
Nonpartisan.
Partisan, you know, so I think you have to listen to both sides. So, you know, that, that's important, uh, for me, and like, I learned through the process, meeting with all of them, I, I actually was pretty impressed with all the county commissioners. And I don't know who didn't vote for it, but they, you know, they, they probably had their reason why, and, 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 you know, we had the guy at Bun Cakes, which I'd love to have on, he had his problem with the hotel being, I understand, he's a small business guy, he's worried about him building right in front, he's worried about the hotel. But I'm thinking like, well, maybe he could sell to the hotel, or like, when they do the construction in front, I'm gonna go buy cakes from him, you know, to support him. Uh, you know, when they do the parking deck in the back, I'm sure it's gonna be a lot of mess, you know, uh, but, you know, I think, like, locally owned guys like John and I, we had to put a million dollars to make this place better, it's out of our pocket, it's a one-year problem, if not, maybe two years, of, you know, making it better. So, Michael, what do you think about Burke Dale, you're, as a, as a consumer, as a, is it one of the spots you like to come to?
Yeah, I love Burke Dale. Now, I mean, I'm excited about the, the growth, obviously, uh, the parking situation, I'm glad it'll be figured out eventually. You know, it's like, it, it's kind of like a hidden gem right now, but I don't know if that's the right phrase for it anymore, because it's kind of blown up, but I am excited about the future of Burke Dale, I love coming here with my kids and my family. As long as the infrastructure around it can remain, you know, feasible, and people can get around easily, and it's not overrun by, uh, cra- crazy crowds with nowhere to park, and people are parking in neighborhoods, and I can't pull in, I can't find anywhere to park, and all that stuff, you know, I mean, that's been the issue lately.
And not, not to interrupt you, but to talk to you about how do we make sure that we don't turn, where kids just get dropped off, you know, we're lucky we don't.
I don't know if there's anything to do about that.
But the bus line, we're lucky we don't have, but we have, I, I now know by ease, they come from the park, from places, they walk up the, the greenway, I'm trying, because, uh, we ate out there the other night, uh, Renee and I at ease, and I noticed it was a little bit, can the police stop, you know, loitering or not? What's the law on that?
Just like Northlake Mall, you put in an ordinance where there's a curfew, until the town does a curfew, the kids can hang out as long as they want to.
Who makes the curfew then? It's because they're on a, is it, you, you would, is the sidewalks owned by the city, or is it owned by?
Now, these sidewalks inside of Burke Dale, it's the town of Huntersville, but we need people to bring it to our attention and be able to justify the need to have a curfew in Huntersville. And if it's enough complaints or concerns, then you vote on an ordinance.
Right, and that might be down the road. If you have to go by ease and see out there, there's a lot of action on that, and we don't get that.
I mean, this is where parents drop their kids off, basically, from like, you know, from the ages twelve to sixteen, I feel like, on Saturday nights, they're just, it's overrun here.
But in the middle of the project, we have the police cars, you know, you don't see a lot, and we have a lot of security. On that side, you saw a little different, it's a little more, um.
But I get it, I mean, I remember being that age, you know, you wanna get dropped off and have fun and like meet up with your.
Our friend was there, she was bitch, I'm like, what do you think I did?
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, I do get it.
And it's, does, it doesn't sound like a stopping people from wanting to come to Burke Dale, so apparently the kids are distracting the eyes, but as far as them getting in trouble, it's not happening.
Yeah. As long as they're not causing a ruckus.
It's a hard, it's a hard subject to say, but whether, whatever demographic they come from, right, you don't know.
I just wanna park, I just need a parking spot.
Yeah.
That's all, when I think, when I pull in, when I pull in, I'm like, if it's Saturday, if we're coming to dinner, I'm like, there's nowhere to park.
Well, I'll tell you what the city did for me, they let me put a cone out front, because they know my situation, and they could really, the police could take it down, but, you know, you always can use my cone, every time you get to, you know, your VIP, do a VIP.
We usually find one, but yeah, I mean, I, I do love what Burke Dale's doing.
We lost, we lost a lot of sales about the time, by the way, and his father-in-law, who's the most amazing, and his wife are the most amazing people you ever meet. Mark SoCal was generous, and he took care of me at the beginning, and he really, uh, supported so to Michael and his wife and, uh, Jessica. And, uh, like you did, so what, what, uh, we're almost gonna run out of time, but what do you wanna tell, like, what, I know you got the QR code we could put up on the show, you know?
We'll take care of that. Yeah, we'll put the website, all the info, contact stuff.
And maybe we, maybe we get a picture of Turtle, well, you know?
Oh, we got to take our picture before we.
We need a picture of that basketball team.
He's gotta sign the hat.
Yeah, Renee, what do you got over there? What do you got? What are you doing over there? I bought her a new dress.
It looks good.
Yeah.
All right, you wanna, all right, so.
What do you wanna say?
Q, what's gonna happen in Hunter, what do you see in Huntersville in five years?
There you go.
Oh, man, I see, um, if you can imagine Conaples or downtown Concord.
I love Conaples.
I see Huntersville being like that in the next five years.
Oh, really?
Uh, Ron started off talking about the two-year terms, we gotta find a way to get four-year terms, because once you, let's say this new boy gets, our boy gets wiped out.
Mm-hmm.
Then you get a new board, two years, first year, you're learning and changing things, second year, you're campaigning again.
Yep.
You need four years to make a, a serious impact in your community.
Yeah.
We have a great plan on what's going on as far as building Huntersville to be a place where, uh, everyone would wanna come. We just came with a new, um, slogan called Thrive Here in Huntersville.
Oh, I love it.
And we want everyone to be able to thrive here, from parks to recreation, to restaurants, places to go, a safe community, but also, most important, public safety. So I see five, in five years, I can imagine a police precinct in four different areas of Huntersville, north, south, east and west, to make everyone feel safe, and that's, that's the key right there.
Nice.
I saw you on WISC too, that's, I love that guy, you know, does a good job with the show. I saw our, our advertisement on there, so he, you know, I think reaching out to getting out there is really important, too, you know?
Cool thing about WISC, they reach out to our town board because they want people to know about what's going on in the community. So every Monday at eleven o'clock AM, uh, someone from the town board is doing a podcast.
That's good.
Yes, but your board, Q, I have the highest rating.
There you go. Hey, I can see why.
Well, do we have ACW ratings? It's gonna be on, is it on this week eleven thirty or not?
It is, yep.
I, I probably got more money? I tried to, I tried to hide that camera, like, we, 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 we had to stop for a week, we ran out of money. So, do we have ratings? Do we have ratings at all in there or not?
That, like, traditional TV, there's not really a way for them to know how many people watch it, so.
Yeah, I think it's like, it was the number one show this weekend, though.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, you're watching the vacuum guy, that's on there, the dental, the clean, clean teeth is on there.
New bathtub.
New bathtub, new shower, and then we have Table Talk with Ron and Michael and Brent and Chrissy. Again, thanks for the hats, we haven't really sold any, we still have a good way. If you don't wanna go to RonnieHats.com and buy one, you're not my friend. I mean, it's got, but, the problem is, like, Mark Mills, he bought six, we don't have.
Menu.
We don't have the hats. And then I told the guy that stole my bed, Neil, who's great, Neil owns the bed place, I got a bed, because my friends, I mean, it costs me money, I gotta get a king-sized bed upstairs now, I mean, it's like, you know, but economic development, the tax dollars going in there to Cornelius.
Bring it all back.
And then, I told the bed guy, you have to buy a hat, well, it's funny, Renee helps him with the hats, we get these stickers, we don't have any of the hats, we're sold out, there's chunk change.
You can't keep them on the shelves.
We can't keep them on the shelves, and our new one's gonna be one.
Too many rich friends.
Yeah. What's the, what's the new hat? Rich, uh.
Rich friend.
Rich friend. So, we're, that's our new hat coming out soon, Rich Friend. So if you have a rich friend, you're gonna buy it for him. We all know who that guy is. Like Jason White, we'll probably get it for him, so.
Hey, Ron, before we sign off, you gonna tell us about Restaurant Week or no?
Oh, wait, Restaurant Week at Red Rocks, we good, you know, we're adding a heart of ribeye this year.
Oh.
We have salmon, heart of ribeye, lobster ravioli, uh, and chicken dish, filet medallions, uh, it's busy, it's, it's a good week for us, and, you know, again, I think the biggest thing is supporting locally owned, you know, that's, that's, you can go north to Italian, they have fifty stores, they're owned by Cheesecake, and they're great, I like the people, no doubts. My friend started Bricks, Jeff Van Dyke, he's got fifty stores, he's on a yacht, I mean, he got.
Rich friend.
Cheesecake, bar taco, they're not working on a Tuesday, I guarantee that, they're like, uh, they're on the yacht right now, and, you know, I'm.
I'm along.
I'm in my pool, you know, trying to get out of the pool. Yeah, it's heated, oh, for sure, now.
This pink swan.
Yeah, I got the pink swan, pinky. And by the way, the, the funny, I, I wish I could get on the pod, the funniest thing about this pink swan is it moves around that damn ring alarm, I have to get Renee, like, go get the pink swan. I mean, think it gets my ring.
You gotta tie it up to the side like the yacht.
That thing sets off your motion alarm?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't use my hot tub at late night without the light coming on, I would love to shut it off. I'd love to shut the thing off.
Cut the wire.
Yeah, well, yeah, 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 yeah. Just so you know, I'm, we don't have many cameras, but that's one of them, so, uh.
We don't have many, huh?
Yeah, so, but, you know, Restaurant Week, and then we go into September, it's been, you know, with competition, you know, we've had some competition, we've held our own a little bit, but it's still, you gotta work for it, and no matter what, you gotta drive yourself every day like you do, uh, well, that's why we like you.
Appreciate that.
You drive yourself every day and you try to make yourself better, and that's what we try to do with Ronnie Hats, with Red Rocks, with Table Talk, and we've had, how many episodes now?
Thirty-six, thirty-seven?
And I didn't, you know, we, we, that means we had to show up thirty-six times, so, and our, our, you know, we're, we're.
I've only shown up thirty-four times.
Huh? How many?
I missed two in the last six weeks.
If you wanna subscribe, we, we need to pop that up at once in a while, because I, I have, you know, we need to get people to subscribe, I think we have forty, because it goes to, Renee, tell us, it goes to your phone, right? The, the show.
The show immediately.
Yeah.
When I get in the car, it's already on Bluetooth.
It's already on Bluetooth.
Not my music, it's.
Is it Spotify, or which ones you use? Shop, you know?
Spotify.
Yeah, if you go to top charts, it's the number one, so, just click that.
We will someday. We got a sponsor we're working on, we're working on, and by the way, Noah, you did say you'd help sponsor my show, so, uh, if you're, I know you're not listening, but you, you need to step up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He'll have one of my rich friend hats, Greg Frenelli, remember, he sponsored the show, he, and then he, he left us, Haag Rose, I asked him to just see if he'd sponsor a show, he did one and left us.
Well, he did Ice, he did Ice one.
I mean, we didn't know.
He did beanies too.
Can we lie about, can we give a rating sheet and just, I mean, is it really lying if you make it up, like, ten thousand people listen?
I'll put some big numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we had ten thou, we did have, when Todd Verdyne took the picture, we had twelve thousand three hundred, look at that picture on my.
All right, that's the number right there.
There it is.
Add all the numbers up together on there.
Yeah.
Well, eighteen thousand people watched the, uh, Xfinity race, we were on right before.
Yeah, 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 so.
So eighteen thousand.
They all watched their show.
Per episode.
Yeah.
Well, Edwin, his campaign manager already called me, she's gonna sing a song, I thought she was coming in today to sing that, we should've had her come in to sing. We might have to have her for a minute, so.
We can make it happen.
Yeah, we need to have her, one day we'll have her sing for us.
New intro song.
At the, uh, at the Ronnie Awards.
Yeah, well, if we ever get to Ronnie.
Ronnie, you did a, you did a great job singing that song, okay, can you do it again?
Yeah, I do get one time.
I mean, that's all high she was. I don't know what song it was. Table Talk, we love Table Talk. You heard it through the whole restaurant. Did you hear last night, Renee? Was it that loud?
Oh, my gosh.
Was she louder than me? No, I was a, you know, and I know we're, uh, short on time, but I was.
Oh, no, keep going.
I was also, I was alto in the choir, and I had to sing, uh, a, a, a song, and I think it was Silent Night.
Yeah, do it.
I mean, Silent Night, no, I, I don't wanna, we'll do it, do a crypt, but Silent Night was my song, but I remember why I had it, you had to take, you know, electives, did you do choir?
No.
With Turtle? No.
No.
Did you do choir?
Yeah, I took choir.
You did? Did you ever, what, what era?
I was a, uh. I was bass.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I don't know, I didn't do choir, no.
Well, I mean, I was, I was a, you know.
What are they, alto, uh, soprano, so the high one, right?
I really wish you had like now, you could go back.
Bass, bass, right?
Bass, yeah. You could be.
What's the, what's the other one?
Go like this, you know?
Baritone.
Baritone. I was baritone.
Well, we sung, you know, I wish we had phones back then. I'm especially going to high school, I wish I had phones, so. Well, I think we're, uh, so, look at this shirt I wanted to buy, it's, it's, let's just let you know, but look at that guy.
Yeah, he looks ripped, all right.
Yeah, I'll show you later, but he's ripped. Okay, well, we're gonna sign off and go to next week.
Well, Q, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck, uh, in the upcoming election, you're doing this one?
Election, I filed on yesterday.
Nice, all right.
Don't have me on begin, we'll, we'll get her out here. What's her name to sing a song?
Natasha.
So November, like, election day is November, what, third?
November fourth.
November fourth, okay.
Economic development.
Economic development.
That's big, I mean, it's so far so good in Huntersville, I'll tell you that. Yes, been coming along. Well, thanks for joining us, Q.
You're welcome.
Uh, Ron, until next week, here's our sign-off music, ready?
There it is.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.